Which our formula funding grant comes out in spring, summer. So it's not more than a month or two from now.
Oh.
We put it out ahead of time for the next fiscal year. So I can now start. This is the first year I've needed to get it all done in April.
Oh, good.
And then start fresh, so to speak.
With no, like, carryovers.
Exactly.
Cool.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I won myself last evening.
We are who we are tonight. How about that?
Hi, Martha. I gave Lana a number of comments for both meeting minutes. Just wanted to. Very good. I guess we can. Okay, no gavel today, so. Is it down there? Okay, very good. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call this Wednesday, April 12th, 2023 meeting of the City of Manassas Park Planning Commission to Order. The time is 7:00 PM. My name is Lester Finkel. Sitting this evening are Martha Collier, John Evans, and Alana Mensing. First order of business is the moan of silence and pledge of allegiance. I will go ahead and do that this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next order of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, would anyone care to make a motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next agenda item is adoption of minutes. We have two sets of meeting minutes this evening. We have the February 8th, 2023 meeting minutes. I've already provided certain changes. Are there any other changes that commissioners would like to make? Hearing none, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt the February 8th meeting minutes as amended?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Second set of meeting minutes are from our March 8th, 2023 meeting. I have provided certain changes already for that. Any other changes? Hearing none, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt the March 8th, 2023 meeting minutes as amended?
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Second set of meeting minutes are from our March 8th, 2023 meeting. I have provided certain changes already for that. Any other changes? Hearing none, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt the March 8th, 2023 meeting minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Second set of meeting minutes are from our March 8th, 2023 meeting. I have provided certain changes already for that. Any other changes? Hearing none, would anyone care to make a motion to adopt the March 8th, 2023 meeting minutes as amended?
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any members of the public present? I don't see any. Okay. Thank you. Our main business item tonight is public hearing FY '24 to FY '28 Capital Improvement Program. I'll open the public hearing. The time is 7:04. City Manager Palco, I'll turn it over to you.
Give me one second.
Of course.
Okay. So my apologies for that delay.
No problem.
And there's a slide also missing in the handout that you guys have in front of you. We're getting that right now in the back to share. So my goal tonight, again, I'm not going to go over every single project again. I'm really just going to go over what's changed since the last time I briefed you all, which, again, the main thing is really now that we have revenues here, you can kind of see what the breakdown is for the revenues. I'll start off with the general fund and then go into the water and sewer fund and stormwater fund. But you can see proffers make up about $6 million. So now I'm showing revenues over expenditures, whereas in the previous meeting, I just showed what the expenditures were. So you can see them, a big chunk of our CIP is going to be funded by receipts of proffer funding over the next few years. And that really, a lot of that ends up going to kind of fund the proffer fund in order to get, fund the NVTA in the future. And then the other big changes here. Let me bring that up. So you can see this number here, the 58.3, that's up from 57.4 million from the last time that I briefed you. The big change from the general fund standpoint was really the additional funding for the community development building, which you'll see in the latter slide that really pushed that up. And we have slightly more usage of the ARPA funding. And then you can see one of the major highlights from the last presentation was this was $21 million the last time presented to you when I had that in the budget, which has led to massive deficits for FY '24. It was just too much beyond what the general fund could support. So we ended up pushing a lot of that back, about $4.5 million pushed back, spread out across all these fiscal years in order to balance the budget.
Did the legislature take care of the school fund? I'm sure you'll get to that later.
They did not, no.
Okay.
As of right now, they haven't reinstated funding, neither for FY '23 or FY '24 for schools. So the city's on the hook for some additional funding this year to help out the schools. And the situation could get worse over the next few years, so I've kind of programmed additional funding for schools. So for this slide, the big change here, again, you can see this number was 14.5 million. It's gone up to 15.8. And again, that represents the increase from the community development department building, the additional there. Then you had minor increases across the board for other projects as we kind of shifted things around, but then a decrease here as we pushed a lot of parks and rec projects back as well. So you'll see that in the timelines later. So for this slide, just like I showed you the proffer revenues before, here we have the tap fee revenues, about $11 million in tap fee revenues over the five-year period to help fund the water and sewer account. There's no other, there was actually no changes to the expenditures from the last time I presented you all. So really, the only difference here is just showing you the revenues, and they either come from the operating, from water and sewer rates, right, that we collect from our residents, or from tap fees from new developments. So if we didn't have the developments, we'd have to come up with an additional $11 million for capital projects. So the developments have definitely helped ease how much we have to increase rates. You know, we're only increasing rates by about 2.5% on average. And we just started that last year. We went over 10 years without any rate increases, but we know inflation's been hitting us. We've been increasing salaries. So it was bound to happen where we'd have to increase rates, but thanks to tap fee revenues, we don't have to increase as much. For stormwater, the biggest change here is going to be with this project here or the total spending. So last time I presented this to you all, this number here was $26.8 million. It's now down to $6.5 million. So we're spending $20.3 million less than when I presented this to you all a couple months ago. And what that involves is changing just one project. We were going to be doing the Russia Branch Stream Restoration, which was shown here last time. Across the CIP, there was about additional $11.3 million in each fiscal year here for funding for that Russia Branch Stream Restoration. That's gone now. That's been replaced by the Bird Sanctuary Stream, which is a much cheaper project at $1.9 million. So we had some outside people evaluate the situation, and they came back with that recommendation. And this will go down even further from a net impact if we are successful in our congressional application. We asked Congress for some direct funding for that project. So if that gets approved, then that's even more savings for our residents. So again, we're spending over the life, the five years, CIP, $20 million less. That's a big boom for rate savings for the stormwater fund. And over the long run, it's even more because what's missing here, too, if you notice, the last time I presented this to you, you had over $500,000 each year for debt because we were going to pay for that $20 million by issuance of debt. So we get some savings here off of debt for these years, but then the out years, because it's, you know, usually a 20- to 30-year loan, you get a lot more savings. So multiply that 500,000 times 20 years, 30 years, and you can see kind of what the savings are going to be. And then the actual stream restoration, it was, last time I came here, it was 78%. It's only now 29% of total spending. So that's the biggest change from last time. So in terms of total dollar amounts, so this last time was about $95 million. So it's about a $17.6 million reduction in total spending across the city from all funds. And of course, the biggest factor is the stormwater, which was up here before at a much larger amount, at that $24 million. So there was slight changes for everything else except for water and sewer, but again, the big change here was the stormwater. Any questions kind of on the overall CIP? Nope. Okay. And then for fleet, the big difference here for fleet is the addition of two vehicles for Public Works, which I'll show you on the next slide, what they're for. But that increased the FY '24 spending by about $22,000 and over the five-year CIP by about $112,000 increase in fleet spending. You can see it's specifically for these two vehicles, to replace two Chevy Silverado's or the addition of some, two Public Works vehicles, two 50s, for the additional two Public Works crew people who are unfrozen to first take on the commercial parking signage project, so they need vehicles to do that. So that's the addition here. We didn't plan for their vehicles in the last time we presented that. We had to add that to the fleet model. For facilities, I talked about the increase, it's not necessarily the increase in cost for this project, but the available revenue, right? We don't know what the final cost is going to be when it comes to actually acquiring the building and any renovations we'll have to do. But we definitely have a lot more money that we're programming in for the project based off of projected development that's going to pay for it. So we always, there was no change to, actually, I have these reversed. So it's the general fund that went up to 4.2 million. The water and sewer fund stayed at 2 million. So this is actually a typo. It should be, the general fund now has a lot more money from projected proffer cash, land sale transactions, and some additional lease revenues as well from the building that we're going to acquire because we're going to give tenants there some time before they leave. Essentially allowing their leases to expire before we move in and we collect some money out of that to kind of put back into paying for the building as well. So we have about $6.2 million to acquire the building and hopefully do some renovations to the building as well that are needed. And then for facilities, I'll go to the next slide here for fire department. Really, the majority of the rest of the changes that I'm going to show you here, it's not about necessarily canceling projects, it's more about pushing them back to fit, to balance the CIP and balance the city budget. So you can see this, the fire department digital LED sign installation, that was pushed back from FY '24. The kitchen remodel was pushed back from FY '26. And then these replacement projects were pushed back from FY '27. So roughly a one-year pushback for these, but a much longer pushback for the LED sign, which, again, we want to have that. We think it's important even for the downtown because we want to kind of promote all the events and everything on that LED sign. But right now, funding's a little bit tight for that, and we'll have to do that through other mechanisms. For transportation projects, there was only one change. The concrete intersection at Owens Drive, that project was slated for FY '24. We're pushing that back to FY '27 in the hopes that we can secure some VDOT funding for it as well to reduce the impact on the city NVTA fund. Schools, there was two changes. So the roof project for the middle school still will start in FY '24, but we projected to actually be, we'll try to push it to happen in the summertime so it goes across two fiscal years, so it doesn't impact, it's a pretty massive project, so we don't want a $2 million impact in a single year. We want to spread that across two years. Same thing with the outdoor air units for the middle school. We want to push that across two years, but this one, we also pushed back the project one year. So a lot of these projects that we're pushing back, the goal is that they'll make it, but if they don't, then we have to come back during the budget amendment process and ask the governing body for funding for some of these projects that could be considered emergencies like this project here or if the roof goes out. But we hope we have enough time, especially for the roof, the air units, again, hopefully by just evaluating it like our team has been doing for the police station. They've been kind of extending the lifespan to kind of push back when we have to replace it. That's the goal here, is to do the same thing with the middle school air units. For the police department, I don't see Keith here. He was supposed to bring back a slide. We have a kennel project. Hopefully, you guys will get the slide. Might be something wrong with the printer. This was a project, this was a project we forgot to include, and it was in the spreadsheet, but it didn't make it to the presentation, the slide deck. But this is to replace, we have three canine kennels at the police station. They're all over 13 years old. They've deteriorated, they reached their end of life. It's actually, so it's about $37,000 to replace them. It would have been almost the same amount just to make repairs, which, again, would not have had the same kind of lifespan. So it actually makes more sense to give our dogs a new home at the police department. Any questions on that project? It's a very straightforward project. Then here, again, just more police projects, projects that we've had to push back. The critical, the night vision goggles got pushed back from FY '24. Same thing with this one got pushed back from FY '25. And again, we're hoping to be able to finance this over multiple years. So you'll notice that there's projects that we push back, and there's other projects that we were looking to finance versus buy outright just to reduce the annual impacts. Here's another example, the patrol area workstations, no, we didn't push back the timeline, but we want to do a five-year lease purchase for these assets to push out payments through FY '30. Is it printing the whole thing? Oh, that's, my bad. I just wanted one slide. Now, I hit the wrong button. When I hit print, I should have hit print slide. So ignore that, I briefed them the project, so they don't need that. My apologies. I thought I hit print for just the slide, and it printed an entire, yeah, go ahead and cancel that.
Can you report that to the city manager?
Yeah, it's a waste of paper.
Waste of paper.
Yeah, my apologies. Okay.
I'm sure he'd want to know that.
I'll be sure to tell him. For Parks and Rec, again, this project, another example, right, where we're going to try to extend the life. This was slated for FY '24. We're going to try to push it back FY '30. Again, there's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things that we had to push back to try to be able to do tax rate reductions and pay raises. Those are the biggest things kind of driving, driving our costs really to operate, along with just increasing costs of CIP projects in general. So we've had to push back a lot of projects that we really want to do. This is one here as well. It just doesn't look good, and we really want to replace it. I'm hoping that we're more successful in development than what we kind of conservatively have planned right now, and we can start moving some of these projects up. The other way, we'll push these projects up as well as if we underspend our ARPA money, right? So if we have some left over in FY '25, FY '26, we'll figure out kind of how much we have left over, and then we can start funding different CIP projects. This one would be eligible for ARPA spending as well. So we look at what projects we can move up in the timeline to get done sooner rather than later. So an example, you'll see Trails Blooms Trail project. Right now, I'm projecting to use almost $2 million of ARPA money for that. I'm hoping to get that Trails project done a different way. So if we get that done a different way, it opens up $2 million to put back in the CIP to move these projects up to FY '25, FY '26. That's my goal. Wellness, Strength Equipment, again, got pushed back one year. The bathhouse, pump room, and pool office demo and rebuild didn't get pushed back, but again, we're hoping to try to come up with some kind of financing structure, a five-year financing structure for that work so we don't have the direct impact in one single year. Then the pavilion renovation also got pushed back, but again, that's another older building. That's going to be, again, a prime target if we have available ARPA money. We're going to want to knock that project out sooner rather than later. Banquet Hall AV, again, that's kind of more of a nice to have. It would definitely enhance the banquet hall and add conference capabilities for the banquet hall. But again, we're just, we're just tight across the budget right now. And then this one, we didn't push back for the water park, for the different features there. We're just trying to, again, we'll have to figure out a lease structure to utilize these assets as collateral and hopefully be able to get a good lease purchase structure to pay it over five years instead of trying to pay it all at one year. Same thing with the bus. So again, this one, we really can't push back. It's getting very old. It just, this should be a lot easier to come up with a financing structure as well. And then I mentioned this, how we're utilizing ARPA for Blooms Park Trails, but I think there's going to be different ways to get that project done, whether it's grants or something else that we won't have to rely on ARPA, and we can then shift ARPA to additional priorities that we have. For community development, for their fleet that are purchased outside the Enterprise White Fleet program, there was two changes. So one was, again, this was a big purchase that we want to try to finance over five years for the bucket truck and then for the large dump truck. That was pushed back one year to balance the budget. For demolition, we have $25,000 each year. I zeroed out FY '24, and I want to say I zeroed out FY '26. I don't think we're going to have a demolition project each year. And with the market right now, we're hoping, again, to really encourage houses as they deteriorate to be sold and renovated through the tight housing market right now. There should be plenty of buyers out there, so we should save more money than even what I'm projecting here. We've had to demolish two homes in the last, in the last few years, but it's not been every year a home. And those two homes were kind of building up over multiple years. We just never got to them. The Connor Center Rehab Plan, again, this would be great to do to kind of plan our infrastructure, infrastructure repair plan, but with the budget being tight, this is one that had to be pushed back as well. So hopefully, we can try to get some kind of planning grant to help us out here to push up the timeline for this project. And those are all the changes since the last time I briefed you all. Do you have any questions?
Question, Trump Commissioners? Mr. Mensing?
I have two questions. The outdoor staircase, are they going to repair, they're going to make repairs to that to kind of hold it over?
Best we can. If we can't, that's, I think that's a prime one for, like, a budget amendment when, if we have a large surplus, we may come back and say, can we add that during a budget amendment to utilize some of the surplus funding to knock that project out?
Yeah. My concern is that it might cost more to repair it than the, or might start to.
Yeah.
The other question, my other question was, we had put the green plan thing in the CIP?
Yes, yes.
I wasn't able to find it.
Oh, it's in the spreadsheet. Let me see if the spreadsheet.
Okay, so it's just in the spreadsheet?
I should have come up with a slide for that. My apologies. That was kind of a, after you guys, the governing body came up with your priorities. That was after this.
Oh, okay.
And so that was one, another, just like the kennel project didn't make it. That was actually a newer project that I got on there once you all finalized the governing body priorities. So it wasn't on your presentation last time. And again, it just slipped my mind to actually create a slide for it. But essentially what that is, and let me show you where it is on this, on the actual spreadsheet here. If you go to our website and go to the governing body meeting and agendas page, 2023, I briefed the budget on April 4th, so you click more, and you find the FY '24 budget spreadsheet right there. You open that up. You go to CIP tab, and you scroll down to the general fund. It's going to be the last, one of the last two projects for the general fund. So let's go down all the way. Yeah, so you see green plan, FY '24, $100,000. So what that is, is governing body priority is to have a consultant, whether it's free from COG or paid consultant, to come in and develop a plan, a roadmap for the city for what type of investments we can do for EV charging stations, solar panels, and other green initiatives across public facilities in the city as well. Any policies, any ordinances, kind of the full gamut of recommendations for environmental planning. We don't have a sustainability officer, so this is something that we would have to outsource.
Great, that's perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Collier?
Under the police items, the night vision, you've pushed that back to FY '30. You'll bring it back in if you could?
Yeah.
Because if this equipment is necessary, I would think we could bring it.
Yeah, that's.
Back in. Saying with that vehicle, is there a vehicle in another jurisdiction that we have access to?
Which vehicle is this?
That safety.
Oh, the armored vehicle?
Yeah.
No, there isn't. So again, the thing that's not shown here is every year, we do apply for congressional funding. We've been successful. We've also been successful with grants recently as well. So this is kind of a balancing act here that I have, but this doesn't reflect what we can do if we win additional grants, if we win congressional funding, and if we have additional ARPA. We know kind of what projects have been pushed back, and we'll try again. So you saw I pushed back roughly $4.5 million, right? So I'm hoping between grants, congressional funding, and ARPA, we can take that $4.5 million worth and move those projects back up.
I need to have a priority list of what.
Yeah. I will come back with recommendations for the governing body, but it's fully transparent here. If you go through the spreadsheet in this slide, you'll see what's been pushed back. So you guys can certainly send your own recommendations to the governing body about what should be priorities. But once I know what we can get, what funding we have available or surplus money, I'll come back with recommendations. But this is something to keep handy, and if, you know, the governing body or you guys can disagree with me and say, no, we want to move this project up, not that one. Yeah.
And the kennels, that's going to be done right away?
Yeah, the kennels are going to be done.
Got to take care of the puppies.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I don't see any members of the public to speak, so if we're done, then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The public hearing is closed. Time is 7:25. If we'd like to move into a motion, I would like to place, say for the record, that I find that the CIP is consistent with the City of Manassas Park's comprehensive plan. And if there's no discussion, then I will offer a motion to recommend the FY '24, FY ' '28 Capital Improvement Program to the governing body for approval.
Moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Moving along, we have informational update from community development staff. Administrator Perry?
Thank you, Chairman. We only have one item that I'd like to tell you about. We are moving forward the Phase IV rezoning application. It's in fairly decent shape, so that will be presented to you at your next meeting in May.
Okay, great. Any questions?
I look forward to that. Hopefully, that, in addition to the downtown, so we're looking forward to having your comments on it and getting it approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have a question.
Commissioner Collier?
It's ongoing, ongoing business. What's the status of the parking garage?
The VRE parking garage? I believe it's out to bid?
No, yeah, they've already identified the contractor.
They have, okay.
I'm not sure if they've awarded the contract already, but I think they're in that process with the goal. Their timeline was to try to start in June or July to break ground here.
I want to see it in my lifetime, so. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Motion second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The time is 7:29. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you all. I appreciate it.